We have before us today Pastor Alan James from the Cave Spring Baptist Church. I would ask Pastor James to maybe come on up to the podium, and I would hope that Pastor could tell us a little bit about his church and his congregation. And then perhaps after that, I would ask everybody who wish to, to arise for the pastor providing us an invocation. And then after the invocation, I'd hope everybody remains standing so we could pledge allegiance. Pastor, floor is yours.
Thank you. Appreciate the invitation to be here with you. As you said, I'm from Cave Spring Baptist Church. We haven't been around quite as long as Roanoke County, but we're approaching our 150-year anniversary. The whole time, I've been right over here on Bramleton Avenue, and we're grateful to be a church that's anchored in this community, and we're grateful to be in a community that's safe and well-run, and so thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
And would you join me as I pray? Oh God, we praise you as the one universal king over all. You are our leader and our Lord, and we worship you, we exalt you. We know we need your mercy, we know we need your grace, we need your help, we need your wisdom in our country, our state, and in our county, Roanoke County. We stand on behalf of all our government leaders, but especially our Roanoke County administrators and Board of Supervisors. We pray for your grace and your mercy and your wisdom upon them all. God, we pray that they would trust in you, that they would lean on you, that they would govern and make decisions in ways that are good for justice, good for righteousness, good for equality, good for every citizen of this county. Lord, we pray that you would give them all the grace they need to govern and lead to peaceful, quiet lives, godly and dignified in every way. God, we pray for your blessing on their families. We pray that you would give them strength, give them clarity and wisdom, remind them that the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom. Please, oh God, give them help to lead Roanoke County alongside other leaders. We pray for leaders in our nation and state. Lord, we ask that they would look to you for their help, to trust in you, to seek your wisdom, and to live in ways that reflect your love and your grace, your righteousness and your justice. We pray for your blessings on this meeting toward that end. Be honored in this meeting, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, and welcome to our meeting for March 22, 2022. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesdays at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Tonight, we will not have a 7 o'clock public hearing since we don't have any schedule for tonight. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. Meetings are broadcast live on RV TV, Channel 3, and will be rebroadcast on Friday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisor meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokcountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or to attend Board of Supervisor meetings should contact the clerk of the board, 540-772-2005, at least 48 hours in advance, and please turn off all cell phones or make them silent. Section on our agenda, A, Opening Ceremonies, roll call.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here, and the phone's turned off.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Item B on our agenda, request to postpone, add, or change the order of agenda items. Does any board member want to change anything?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kaywood? Mr. Lubek? No, thank you.
I have no changes, sir. No changes.
Item C on our agenda, briefings. A briefing by the Roanoke Regional Partnership, Mr. John Hall, the Executive Director. Mr. Hall?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mahoney, and thank you, members of the Board of Supervisors, for the opportunity to present to you a summary of the work of the Roanoke Regional Partnership in 2021, as well as a look ahead. Again, I'm John Hall, I'm the Executive Director of the Partnership. I'm joined in the audience by Pete Echelman, Director of Outdoor Branding for the Partnership, as well as Taylor Johnson, Director of Town Attraction for the Partnership. Start with a few quick facts. The partnership was established in 1983. We are a public-private partnership. We match every public sector dollar with a private dollar, so leveraging your investment for a larger impact. You contribute $2.07 per capita, and that contribution is leveraged with other public and private monies to a total of 1.6 million total. This map reflects our service area, the light green, the Allegheny Highlands, Bodatot County, of course, Roanoke Valley, and Franklin County. We are a regional partnership, and we serve this region. We do have four strategic priorities, which include economic growth and innovation, with a focus on marketing and lead generation. We do have a focus as well on talent attraction and workforce development. We also work to support work to ensure that we have the real estate product necessary to compete for deals, and our last work area is described as placemaking and livability. These are from our Thrive 2027 Strategic Plan, which will guide our work for the next five years. It was completed by the public and private sector leadership of our region and assisted by Ernst &amp; Young Economic Development Advisory Services. And implementation has begun in earnest of this work. For the next few slides, we'll be presenting some of our results for the last year. In 2021, there was success. We had two expansions in two new locations regionally, a total of 290 jobs and $55 million in capital investment. That includes Cardinal Glass, Munter's, Balcom, and Adui Pow. Represents manufacturing as well as logistics industries. The overall economic impact of the work of the Roanoke Regional Partnership in 2021 equals $125 million. That number represents two figures. Successful projects at full build-out and implementation at their full employment scale, and also events such as the Blue Ridge Marathon, Go Fest, and Go Cross. This number, 125 million, equates to 530 jobs created this year directly and indirectly. That includes the multiplier impact. So the partnership, I'm pleased to report, is making a difference and contributing to an accelerated growth trajectory as we recover and move into a new phase of growth. One of our key functions at the Roanoke Regional Partnership is that of promoting the area for business locations. I'm happy to report that the interest level seen at the partnership has far surpassed pre-pandemic times. Companies are evaluating the region for investment actively and often. And first, let's get some definitions out of the way. Inquiries are the widest part of the lead and project funnel. These are contacts made that have not resulted in defined project opportunities. Contacts made with companies, developers, consultants, and site selectors by phone, Zoom, or in-person, and an opportunity to describe the region's advantages. Projects are opportunities. Oftentimes, we know the sector, the industry. We know the project's anticipated capital investment as well as its anticipated employment profile. There's an opportunity to respond on behalf of our region and compete for the opportunity. A prospect is when a company has visited to evaluate the market and evaluate a specific piece of real estate. Lastly, information requests are requests for data and information from our staff. We get requests from governments, citizens, nonprofits, and businesses throughout the region who need information to make informed decisions. And the VEDP number, that reflects Virginia Economic Development Partnership, who is our state partner. The Roanoke Regional Partnership generates roughly 60% of the lead activity that we have here on the slide, but a significant proportion does come from our partnership with the state, and I think, you know, the numbers demonstrate that the partnership couldn't be stronger than it is now. Note that inquiries, the 2021 number is vastly higher than 2020, but a little bit lower than 2019. That's because most of the traditional outreach events and so forth did not resume until around June of 2021. Okay? So in about seven months timeframe, we very nearly generated the same amount of inquiries and activity as we did in 2019. But you'll notice that the projects and prospects are all well above even pre-pandemic times. So interest in the region, again, is significant. I think it's at the highest level we've seen in quite some time. And the site readiness picture really is part of that story. We'll talk in a minute about the Woodhaven Technology Park in which you're invested. It's driving a lot of interest and driving some interest in some larger opportunities in terms of employment and investment than we've seen. In 2021, we ended the year with a 60% increase in projects and prospects over the previous year on a year-to-date basis, and activity has been diverse. Cryptocurrency and data centers, outdoor product manufacturing, food and beverage manufacturing. The opportunity is truly greater than ever before, and the projects are large. We have average capital investments of 80 million, average employment profiles of 200 As I mentioned, the partnership is back on the road, filling the lead funnel with inquiries. These are just on the slide, some of the opportunities that the partnership worked in the last calendar year to identify new projects, and the strategy of sector and consultant outreach is working. Never before have we seen the level of activity as I've shared previously. In December, we launched a consultant and developer-focused marketing campaign around innovation. A full-page ad was run in Area Development Magazine, a special landing page was developed, and a webinar was scheduled with leadership of Carillion Clinic, Frayland Biomedical Research Institute, and the Roanoke Regional Partnership for early this year. The ad materials featured Roanoke Innovation Corridor, but in the webinar, we described the opportunities regionally. We believe that the opportunity extends well beyond the corridor itself and is a regional opportunity. So I'm pleased to report in our webinar, we had 110 attendees. They include consultants, real estate professionals, developers, and even a few entrepreneurs, and we generated quite a few conversations and activity from that effort. In 2021, staff-supported efforts to increase site readiness throughout the region. Woodhaven Technology Park, of course, which you're well aware of, and you own jointly with the City of Roanoke and City of Salem, was graded, offering 2,000 feet of Interstate 81 frontage and a site offering speed to market for impactful projects. That work was completed late last year. In addition, we supported governments throughout the valley, throughout the region, I should say, in competing for Virginia Business Ready Sites Program funding from the state, Virginia Economic Development Partnership. And I'm pleased to report that the region overall, including the Woodhaven Technology Park, is receiving substantial dollars, $1.4 million in sum between Bodatot County, Franklin County, and the Regional Industrial Facility Authority for additional improvements on those We did work to implement our Go Virginia grant, the Recovery and Resiliency Grant. A series of roundtables were held to learn more about challenges faced by businesses throughout the region. Quite a bit of conversation surrounding some labor and so forth. Referrals were made to service providers like the Western Virginia Workforce Development Board and our local Departments of Economic Development, who have been engaged in this process from the start. This information also fed into our five-year strategic planning efforts. On the talent front, we continue to tell a story of what makes this region a prime destination for workers. We ended the year with a campaign to reach our boomerang audience. Those are those who were born here or lived here at one time, some studied here and have moved away for employment opportunities elsewhere, many of which had many positive experiences here in the past and would like to return. And so we had a Home for the Holidays campaign that rounded out the year on the talent front. It was seen on multiple platforms multiple times, lots of traction in social media and interest generated, highlighted amenities throughout the region as well as businesses and specific amenities. We're also building a network of ambassadors of diverse professional and personal backgrounds to highlight the opportunities this region poses from a professional as well as a livability standpoint, so the talent attraction work continues. Now on the outdoor front, we have a number of signature events. We have worked tirelessly to build a meaningful brand around the outdoors with these events. They draw outside participation and raise our profile as a region. Livability supports economic development by increasing our place's desirability, our profile, and enhancing our narrative. I think in my last report to the board, we noted that the vast majority of our events were canceled by COVID, and I'm pleased to report that in 2021, the Blue Ridge Marathon, America's toughest road race, returned in an in-person format. That event was one of the first larger in-person events to return regionally and provided a regional boost to our image as well as an economic boost of $1.6 million. Go Cross, an event hosting some of the best cyclist cross athletes in the world, is another in-person event that returned and was hosted in September. This year, we attracted more pro cyclists than ever before as the opening event of the UCI season. Go Cross has become a national caliber event, enhancing our region's brand and generating And Go Fest, our signature outdoor event, did return in a slightly different format, but did generate, we believe, 28,000 attendees based on data from cell phones, cellphone 2.5 million, that's the impact of our events in 2021, including the marathon, Go Fest, and Go Cross. These are based on surveys done of attendees as well as data that we have collected on the number of attendees for most of these events, as well as where they traveled from. Also on the outdoor front, we continue to invest in outdoor infrastructure. Project Outside was started in August of 2020 in response to community and stakeholder feedback that we, as a region, need to ensure we aren't loving our outdoor infrastructure to death and that we're adequately investing in maintenance, as well as investing in new infrastructure. So Project Outside, a community fund for businesses and individuals to contribute to, was born. In 2020, we raised $100,000. Half of that came from Go Fest sponsors, as well as citizens and businesses. Last year, we had 23 applications and awarded $100,000 to 14 projects ranging from a new river access point at Dixie Caverns to trail tools for volunteers, as well as a new outdoor mentor program. And all those projects have been completed. This year, we received 21 applications, $146,000 in total requests for the 50,000 that we had to allocate. This year, Go Fest actually happened, so we didn't have that sponsored money to apply. But this year, half of the 50,000 came from Go Fest proceeds and half from individuals. We broke the grant into three categories, which include maintenance, new infrastructure, as well as organizational support. We have an advisory council of 30 members throughout the region with an interest in the outdoors, including business leaders, land managers, interest groups, and citizens. Individually, they scored the applications and send their funding recommendations to the Roanoke Outside Board of Directors, a sister organization of the Roanoke Regional Partnership. These are the projects awarded with the latest round of funding. Some of the highlights, for your awareness, are McAfee's Knob Fire Road Repair Project, as well as the Explore Park Trail Workshop. Proud to support both these marquee regional assets, which do so much to build our outdoor brand and draw visitors to the valley. But we are actively making sure our efforts are not only to tell the story, but investing and improving the story, and that's part of what we're about. Big possibilities in the outdoors and large opportunities to address. Thank you so much again for the opportunity to be here and to present to you a summary of our work in 2021. Appreciate the opportunity and would be pleased to take your questions.
Any questions?
Just one quick comment. We were just talking a few minutes ago about marathons and the most difficult one, and ones that are easier and maybe greenway-based. I would love to see a greenway-based marathon in our region, and maybe eventually, Doug, wherever you are, whenever we get the Green Hill Park greenway completed into Salem, I would love to see and explore that idea further. I don't think we should have to travel three hours to go get that easy marathon. Appreciate all you do, John. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Thank you.
Yeah, John, good presentation as always, and good to be back in person this year in a pre-pandemic environment. I mentioned earlier to you before the meeting started about Senator Sanslow's comments about all the jobs leaving Virginia, 100,000 jobs, and I find it interesting that you shared with me your view here in this area. Could you comment on that for the rest of the board and the public?
Certainly, certainly, Mr. North. Yes, so unlike most Virginia, when you look at migration trends and we're talking about migration, the larger, you know, your Hampton Roads in Northern Virginia is actually on a net, most people, more people are leaving than coming in. On a net basis, when you consider migration, they're losing folks, and that's not true for our Roanoke region. We are gaining positively through migration. It's an attractive place to live, and our town attraction efforts continue to build.
Good. That's good news to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah, John, I want to ask you about Go Fest, because it's a different format. Do you plan on going back to grass under you instead of pavement and concrete? And the reason why I ask is, you know, I had several county residents with kids say, you know, hey, we really like the wide-open field, we like, yeah, might be a question for...
Yeah, we might call Pete up here.
Yeah, yeah, come on up here. Because I did have a lot of people comment to me that, you know, it's okay downtown, we understand COVID and all that, but several of them asked, did y'all inquire about using our Green Hill Park? And Bodatot County has, I mean, we're all regional partners, and we have grass and big fields.
Yep. We're still figuring out what it's going to look like. We definitely took the feedback. We do a survey post-event, and the survey was pretty split, 50/50, on whether they liked it downtown or liked it with more grass. Some of the challenges of being downtown without the grass, something that the group is currently looking at, is like, if it stays downtown, can those things be incorporated into it? There's some areas that weren't utilized, or if it goes back to River's Edge, or if it goes somewhere else, those are all the things that we are looking at. Regardless of COVID and how things have infected the supply chain and the staffing and the resources of our typical vendors, it's probably going to be two to three years till it's back to what people are expecting it to be, because they don't have the resources to implement, you know, on-the-ground activation. And so that was one of the reasons for going downtown, was a new venue to figure out whether people liked it downtown or not, whereas if it had been at the previous location, it wouldn't have looked the same, and people would have been disappointed that way. So we're kind of battling all of the expectations that people have and trying to figure out what this new reincarnation of Go Fest will look like, because I think it's going to be changing a little bit.
So what do we expect in the fall?
We don't know yet, and that's the honest answer.
So our parks are open for use for that event?
Absolutely. Yeah. And just, you know, the Roanoke City Parks and Rec is a partner on that festival, and so they would have to be at the table for that, too. It's not solely the partnership's decision. But yeah, I hear you. Thank you.
Or maybe the comment should be that if there was something similar that we could utilize a Green Hill Park or something similar, we would love to visit further.
Now, that's a great idea. Doug, get on it.
Mr. Peters?
John, I want to thank you for the presentation today. I guess my question to you from a local government standpoint, what could we do to continue to enhance our region and bring people to this area?
Sure. Jason, great question, and thank you for asking it. I think there's lots of opportunity to look at a couple issues, and those, I would say, would be additional land for development for traded sector industries, as well as ensuring that our region is competitive from a housing development standpoint. And, you know, additional housing studies to look at that issue. I think those two things are things that local governments can do. Thank you.
Well, I mean, I've been very pleased with what I'm seeing at Woodhaven. I'll be even more pleased when we see that develops, but to get to the point that we have it, I mean, I think we've come a long way since 2016 when we made that announcement. So as Jill will tell you, I'm always looking for opportunities to how we can continue to move Roanoke County and the entire region forward, so.
Thankful for that. Thank you so much.
I really liked the data, the numbers you showed on one of the earlier slides. I think it reinforces the fact that we're coming out of the pandemic. You look at the numbers, that, to me, was a very positive step, that, yeah, we see some things and we get anecdotes, but to see hard data like that is good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, item D1 under New Business, a resolution authorizing the execution of amendments to memorandum of understanding to Town of Vinson for the Vinson East County Hotel, the Vinson Station, and the Gish Mill redevelopment projects. Jill Lu.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This item is being brought to you at the request of the Town of Vinson to modify memorandum of understanding for three redevelopment projects in the Town of Vinson to adjust the timeline for reimbursements consistent with county assessments. The Town of Vinson and Roanoke County have previously adopted memorandum of understanding for three redevelopment projects, the Vineyard Station, Gish Mill, and Vinson East County Hotel projects. Each agreement references a specified reimbursement of net new taxes generated by the development for the previous year. At the time of adoption, best estimates are utilized for the project construction and completion date, as well as the start date for reimbursements. Due to the timing of real estate assessments, construction, and supply chain disruptions, and the timeline for projects and reimbursements for each agreement, we will need to be moved forward by one year for the town to realize the full intent and benefits of the agreements. The three projects and approved memorandum are summarized as follows. The Vineyard Station Redevelopment Project. A memorandum of understanding was approved by the board on November 6, 2019, which included a five-year reimbursement of taxes estimated at 40,000 per year, not to exceed $200,000. The first installment was scheduled to begin on January of 2022, concluding on January of 2026. The revised memorandum will adjust that timeline to January of 2023, concluding January 2027. The Gish Mill Redevelopment Project. The memorandum of understanding was approved by the board on May 11 of 2021, which included a five-year reimbursement of taxes estimated... a five-year reimbursement of taxes estimated at $40,000 per year, not to exceed $200,000. The first installment of taxes was scheduled to begin on January of 2024, concluding January of 2028. The revised memoranda would adjust the timeline for reimbursements to January of 2025 to January of 2029. And finally, the Vinton Hotel redevelopment project. The memorandum of understanding was approved by the board in July of 2021, which included a three-year reimbursement of taxes estimated at $150,000 per year, not to exceed $450,000. The first installment for this memoranda was scheduled to begin on January of 2024, concluding January of 2026. The revised memoranda would begin the reimbursements January of '25, concluding January of 2027. Staff recommends approval of the resolution to enter into the revised memorandum of understanding with the Town of Vinton for these three redevelopment projects. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on this. And Pete Peters, Town Manager, is also here to address any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Peters?
So for clarification, the tax bills that will be going out now, mainly for Vinton, the Vineyard Station, there'll be no reimbursement on that. They will not begin until next year.
January of '23, that's the direction.
Just clarifying.
So it will be for this full year of operation.
Okay.
And these other projects, Gish Mill, you're assuming that full year is going to be in those future dates, is that correct?
Everything we do is based upon estimates and projections, and we try to target those dates appropriately early on in this process, but oftentimes schedules shift, timelines get adjusted based upon supply chain disruptions, construction scheduling, what have you. And that's the basis for requesting all three adjustments today, so we can do it all at once.
So I guess my follow-up question would be, why do we put a timeframe, why don't we put in the memorandum of understanding a year after operation? Because we don't know what the future, we don't know if the hotel could be put off. We don't know, so we'd have to come back and do this again. So why would there not be just language in there that would state we would do this upon the first year completion, whatever the case may be?
I think our attorneys would expect us to have a start and stop date.
Oh, okay, the attorneys. I forgot those people.
I would like to encourage the developer to, I don't want to be crude, to move forward in a timely fashion and not delay. This is sort of an incentive for the developer not to...
But if we're going to push it off, where's the incentive?
Well, we don't have to push it off. You have to see if you have a motion and a second and a vote.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion if that's the case.
Mr. Chair.
Do we have a further question?
I do. Perhaps Mr. Peters can comment on what's going on with the hotel. Have you found somebody yet to...
That Mr. Peters, not me.
Not this Mr. Peters.
We are currently working on site planning and utility relocation for both underground and overhead utilities. So we're still probably not quite on schedule that we had originally planned about a year ago, but we're still moving forward.
But you don't have a proprietary just yet, is that correct?
We have not secured a hotel franchise.
Exactly, a hotel franchise. Okay. What's your sense on that? Because I'm curious.
It's contingent to the site preparation and once they have the final site plan together, then they will pitch it to the three major national franchises and they will select from that group.
Good. Well, good luck on that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So just to follow up, so they want to know the cost before they get in. That's basically what you're trying to do is give them that developed cost on the site?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thanks. That's all.
I have a motion.
He's already made a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second?
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item D2 on our agenda, a resolution approving a submission of waivers to the Virginia Department of Elections in order to administer split precincts. Mr. Lupe?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This matter is a companion matter to item I-1 of today's agenda, in which the board will conduct its second hearing in public hearing regarding proposed redistricting matters. And as discussed at the board's last meeting on March 8, under the proposed redistricting maps for 2022, Roanoke County will have two voting precincts that will unavoidably contain splits between election districts. We had also reviewed the requirements of the Code of Virginia, specifically that section 24.2307 states that each voting precinct, quote, "must wholly be wholly contained within a single congressional district, senate district, House of Delegates district, and election district used for the election of one or more members of the governing body or school board for the locality," end of quote. Accordingly, the Board of Supervisors will need to apply for a waiver from the Virginia Department of Elections to administer split precincts. And specifically, under the proposed redistricting maps for 2022, Roanoke County will have two voting precincts that will unavoidably contain splits between two different election districts. These are Precinct 103, which is North Glenver, which includes a portion of Senate District 3 and Senate District 4, and also Precinct 106, which is South Glenver, which includes a portion of Senate District 3 and Senate District 4. And this time, it is proposed that the board apply to the, approve an application to the Virginia Department of Elections to apply for a waiver to administer these two precincts as split districts pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 24.2307. And again, this is something that unfortunately the board will need to do on an annual basis until such time as the boundaries that have been dealt to us are changed. Would welcome any questions that you have.
Any questions to Mr. Lupeck or I believe the registrar is here? Any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Lupeck, my recollection is, is this is basically frozen for the next decade. Is there any opportunity that you've been able to see in the code that would allow correction of this problem?
No, sir. I think there is nothing that I've seen in the code. And this is the unique situation in that although a committee was tasked with determining the lines, they were unable to do so, as the board knows, and the lines were set by court order by the Supreme Court of Virginia. And so the only way that these lines can be changed is by court order, and it would require perhaps partition by Roanoke County to the Supreme Court to amend those lines. And while that's certainly something we could explore, I do not know what the court would do.
Do we want to send Peter up to the Supremes?
I give him something to do.
He doesn't have enough, right?
I think it would be true.
Sleeping dogs lie. That is list.
If there are no further questions, I would ask for a motion to adopt this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, both of these precincts are in my district, and so I'd like to make a motion approving the resolution, approving the submission of waivers to the Virginia Department of Elections to administer the split precincts. Thank you, Peter.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Next item on our agenda is item E, requests for public hearings and first readings of rezoning ordinances. It's a consent agenda. Approval of these items does not indicate support for or judge the merits of the requested zoning actions. Rather, it satisfies procedural requirements and schedules the public hearings will be held after a recommendation by the Planning Commission. With these four items, each one of them, if they are adopted, the second reading and public hearing would be on April 26, 2022. The first item, E1, a petition of A. Boone Real Estate Incorporated to rezone approximately 32.32 acres from R1 Low Density Residential District to C2 High Intensity Commercial District, and R3 Medium Density Multifamily Residential District to construct a hotel, professional medical offices, and townhouses located in the 1300 and 1400 blocks of Edgebook Road, Catawba Magisterial District. I would ask for a motion to approve the first reading and to schedule the second reading and public hearing on April 26.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve E1 for the first reading and schedule the second for April 26, 2022.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item E2 is a petition of Ronald Moran and Richard Boynton to rezone approximately 3.145 acres from R1 Low Density Residential District to I1 Low Intensity Industrial District, located at 4038, 4056, and 4066 Cross Mill Lane, Catawba Magisterial District. I would ask for a motion to approve first reading and schedule the second for April 26, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, this is also in the Catawba District, and I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading and schedule the second reading for April 26, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item E3 is a petition of Wiko LLC to obtain a special use permit to operate a short-term rental on approximately 2.28 acres of property that is currently zoned R1 Low Density Residential District, located at 910 Paint Bank Road, Catawba Magisterial District. You're on the roll.
I am. Things are happening in the Catawba District. I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading and schedule the second reading for April 26, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item E4, a petition of Wild Partners to obtain a special use permit to operate a car wash on 1.03 acres on property zoned C2C, High Intensity Commercial District, with conditions. Located at 3250 Electric Road, this is in the Cave Spring Magisterial District, I would move approval of the first reading of this ordinance and to schedule second reading and public hearing on April 26, 2022. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Next item on our agenda, item F1, public hearing for citizen comments on the maximum 2022 calendar year tax rates for real estate, personal property, machinery and tools taxes. Ms. Gerhardt?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this item is to conduct a public hearing for citizen comment on the maximum 2022 calendar year tax rates. The public hearing was advertised on March 8 and March 15 in the Roanoke Times, thereby satisfying state code requirements for public notice. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing to receive citizen comments on the maximum 2022 calendar year tax rates.
I would like to open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
I have no one signed up for this. No, sir.
Maybe Mr. Hutchins would like to speak at the public hearing. I will close the public hearing since we have no speakers. Item F2, resolutions to set the following maximum tax rates for calendar year 2022 to support the fiscal year 2022/2023 operating budget. Ms. Gerhardt?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this item is a request for the Board of Supervisors to approve resolutions setting maximum tax rates for calendar year 2022 in support of the fiscal year 2022/23 operating budget. Today is the first step in a two-step process to adopt maximum tax rate or a tax rate that cannot be exceeded. The second step is to adopt the final tax rates on April 12, 2022. The three separate resolutions you have in front of you set the maximum tax rates for real estate, personal property, and machinery and tools. The adoption of these resolutions was preceded by a public hearing just held to receive citizen comments. The public hearing was advertised on March 8 and March 15 in the Roanoke Times, thereby satisfying state code requirements for public notice. Currently, the tax rates are $1.09 per $100 assessed value for real estate, $3.50 per $100 of assessed value for personal property, and $2.85 per $100 of assessed value for machinery and tools tax. Staff recommends the Board of Supervisors set maximum tax rates by resolution for calendar year 2022 with adoption of calendar year 2022 tax rates scheduled for April 12, 2022.
Again, it's a matter of information. As is shown in our agenda materials, each penny of the real estate tax rate generates about $997,000. Each penny under personal property generates about $116,000, and each penny in machinery and tools generates about $10,200. With that, item F2A is the resolution to set the real estate maximum tax rate for calendar year 2022. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on item 2A to set the real estate maximum tax rate at $1.09 per $100 of assessed value for calendar year 2022.
23.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item 2B is a resolution to set the personal property maximum tax rate for calendar year 2022 to support fiscal year 2022/2023 operating budget. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to set the maximum tax rate for personal property at 350 per 100.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And finally, item C, resolution to set the machinery and tools maximum tax rate for calendar year 2022 for fiscal year 2022/2023 operating budget. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make the motion for 2C, resolution to set the machinery and tools maximum tax rate for calendar year 2022. At, what's the rate? I'm sorry.
285.
Thank you. 285. Thank you.
And I'll second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item G, public hearings. Public hearing for citizen comments on the, let's see, is that real estate effective tax rate for calendar 2022? G1. Ms. Gerhardt?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this item is to conduct a public hearing for citizen comment on the effective real estate tax rate for calendar year 2022. Per the Code of Virginia, 58.1-3321, when any annual reassessment in the county of Roanoke of real property would result in an increase of 1% or more in the total real property tax levies, excluding new construction, is required to be completed. The county of Roanoke's real property assessments, excluding new construction, increased by 6.32% over the previous year. Therefore, per state code, the county must calculate the effective tax rate increase, advertise, and conduct a public hearing for the effective tax rate increase. The advertisement was published in the Roanoke Times on February 20, 2022. After conducting the public hearing, the Board of Supervisors, should it so choose, may elect to keep the real estate taxes the same rate as prior year or make adjustments to the tax rate. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing to receive citizen comments on the real estate effective tax rate for calendar year 2022.
I will open the public I will open the public hearing on this matter. I have no requests from citizens. Madam Clerk, do you have anything?
Um, I believe we have one that I put it in your folder. I believe it was Robert Payne. Is Mr. Payne in the audience?
Do we have any citizen who wishes to speak at this public hearing on this matter? I will close the public hearing. Item G2, this is a public hearing to receive comments on, regarding a proposed amendment to the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget in accordance with Code of Virginia, Section 15.2, 2507. Remind the board members that this involves the, uh, some of the school board funding. And so Ms. Gerhardt is here, and also Ms. Peterson is way in the back corner. If we have any questions for her. Ms. Gerhardt.
Again, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, this item is to conduct a public hearing for citizen comments amending the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget by adjusting the aggregate amount to be appropriated during the fiscal year by $5,157,837.51 for additional grants for Roanoke County Public Schools. Section 15.2-2507 of the Code of Virginia as amended provides that whenever such amendment exceeds 1% of the total expenditure shown in the adopted budget, the county must publish notice of a meeting and public hearing. The notice must state the county's intent to amend the budget and include a brief synopsis of the proposed budget amendments. The notice was published on March 15, 2022. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing to receive comments.
I will open the public hearing. I have no speakers listed. Madam Clerk, have none?
No, sir.
With that, I will close the public hearing. Item H1, Second Reading of Ordinances. An ordinance accepting and appropriating $5,157,837.51 in additional grants for Roanoke County Public Schools. Ms. Peterson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I have no changes to the report. It stands as it was presented last time. So if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Any questions to Ms. Peterson? If not, I would welcome a motion to approve this ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve item H1.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Item I1, this is an ordinance, public hearing and second reading of ordinances. This is an ordinance reapportioning the representation, Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County by altering boundaries of election districts, establishing voting precincts therefore, incorporating a map showing the boundaries of said districts and precincts, and designating new polling places for certain precincts. Mr. Lubek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. I am here again with my fellow members of the county's redistricting committee, and we are here, as Mr. Mahoney has said, for the second reading and public hearing with regards to the committee's proposals with regards to redistricting. And before I turn the time over to Ms. Dooly, I would like to share just a few points. So we will today, of course, not share all of the information that was shared at the Board's last meeting on March 8th. We will only highlight a few changes, and there are three changes that I'd like to highlight. The first and major change was that at the request of Supervisor North, in order to keep the Hollands Magisterial District unchanged as much as possible, there is a proposed slight adjustment to the new boundary line between the Hollands and Vinton Magisterial Districts. And Ms. Dooly will momentarily show some slides and present this change in more detail. The second change was simply changes to the descriptions in the ordinance of Magisterial District boundaries to include more information where appropriate, such as we have included more information and references with regards to census block data, just to make the descriptions more exact. The third change is with regards to the effective date, and as we had shared with the Board on several instances, we had received direction from the State Department of Elections to, and received some pressure from them, to have this process completed by the end of March. And since we were last before the war, we did receive some new and different information from the State Department of Elections, and we included that information in the Board's packet. An advisory was sent to Ms. Clayton entitled Official Elect Advisory. Elect, of course, refers to the State Department of Elections, and this advisory is dated March 11 of 2022. And the first paragraph of this advisory stated that, quote, "Elect's previous deadline for congressional redistricting was March 21 of 2022. However, due to several factors, this is not a realistic deadline anymore," end of quote. And the advisory continues and directs localities to not make any redistricting changes that would be effective for the congressional primaries in June 2022 until after those elections are concluded. So, we have accordingly changed the effective date of the proposed ordinance in the Board's packet. The congressional primaries would be conducted with the new congressional boundaries but with the existing precincts and with the existing polling places. And so the Board would not need to take any action in advance of that election. So, inviting your attention to page 20 of the new lengthy ordinance, the concluding paragraph state contains the effective clause, which states that this ordinance shall become effective upon the latter of, 1, issuance of a certificate of no objection from the Office of Attorney General; 2, 60 days following the Board's submission of this ordinance to the Office of the Attorney General, so long as no response is received from the Office of the Attorney General pursuant to Virginia Code Section 24.2-129D; or 3, July 1 of 2022, which is after our congressional primary elections. So, again, wanted to highlight those three major changes since we were last before the Board. In following Ms. Dooly's brief presentation, we, of course, will welcome any questions that you might have, and then we would recommend that the Board proceed to have a public hearing on this matter and thereafter to consider adoption of the proposed ordinance. Ms. Dooly?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I just have a few revisions to our last presentation for you a couple of weeks ago. There was one major change to the proposed districts since the first reading. At the request of the Board, the district and precinct boundaries were revised near the Hollands and Vinton boundary. Originally, the area between East Roatan and West Roatan Road was proposed to move to the Vinton District, but after input from the Board, this area was adjusted to leave that area in Hollands. Here, each census block is labeled with the total population for that block, so the block labeled 276 would remain in Hollands. The total population for this area to be moved to Vinton is 862. Forty-four are considered non-white by the census, 5.1% of the total population for that area. Going with the proposed changes to the magisterial districts, the non-white population for Vinton would decrease from 8.2 to 8.1, and for Hollands, it would increase from 15.8 to 16.3. This is the proposed plan's total population per magisterial district. Catawba would have the highest population at 19,971. Vinton would have the lowest at 19,004. Under the proposed plans, all the districts would still be within the 5% required deviation. This is a revised graph that compares the existing to the proposed population per district with the existing population in hatch bars and proposed population in the solid bars. These are the new proposed magisterial districts. It's referenced in the ordinance as Exhibit A. These are the revised Catawba districts in Exhibit B. The major changes were the protrusions off of West Bain Street, the ones that we're submitting waivers for. We revised those to follow the congressional lines. There was also one minor change along the southern boundary of the district, near 12-Ock Knob Road, to follow definable USGS topological features that are more clearly explainable in the legal descriptions. These are the proposed precincts in Hollands District, Exhibit D. The revised area is located southwest of the Orchard's Precinct and follows the proposed Hollands-Vinton boundary. Vinton's proposed precincts in Exhibit E shows the revised area northeast of the Bonsec Precinct and follows the Vinton-Hollands boundary. Exhibit F, Windsor Hills Restructured Precincts, the only minor change was near the northern boundary in the area 12-Ock Knob Road, which I previously mentioned for Catawba. There were two dwellings that would have been impacted by the alignment of the districts to the census blocks, and at the first reading, we were going to continue to follow the current magisterial district line at that location, as to not displace the dwellings from what is part of their, we consider part of their neighborhood, their community. But after reviewing the legal descriptions more carefully, we decided to follow definable USGS topological features that are more easily explained and followed in the legal descriptions. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Just a question from Mr. Peters. So let me get this straight. In June, the primaries for the Democrats and the Republicans and whatever are going to use the existing structure we have in place, and then for the congressional races, and then in November during the general election, we're going to use these new districts. Is that correct?
Sir, that is correct.
I just want to make sure I understood that.
Yes, sir. It is.
Mr. Peters is shaking his head, too. It's a little bit of a puzzle.
It seemed like they would keep it through the rest of the year and then make it. It's odd they were doing it in the middle of an election cycle. Yeah.
We agree, and we believe that the challenge will be to communicate this information to the public.
It sounds like it'd be confusing. It's confusing to citizens.
It is.
Yes.
It's confusing to us.
So let me get this straight, then. Ms. Clayton won't send out the 74,000 notices of changes to the public, or whatever the amount is, until after July 1, thereabouts?
That is correct.
Okay. And so, we also don't know what the Circuit Court in Richmond's doing with the lawsuit that was filed on General Assembly elections that were supposed to be next year. Some people are saying, no, they ought to be this year. So we still don't know that neither.
And there has been no resolution of that case. That is correct.
All right. I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah. Since we've added more precincts, this is a question for Anna. Do we have enough equipment?
Oh, we're fine. We're fine. We made our changes so that we consolidated some of the less populated precincts and could add the precincts that we're forced to add so that we avoid the splits without requiring us to purchase more equipment.
Okay.
So, we're good there.
Okay. How about people, volunteers and all that? When's all that start to crank up?
Next month. We start working on getting people scheduled to come in for training.
Okay.
It's a little easier once we know exactly which elections we'll be having in June.
Okay.
But we like to get started early.
Right. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, I would like to open a public hearing. Do we have any citizens who would like to speak to the redistricting ordinance? Speak now or forever hold your peace? Do we have a motion to approve the second reading of our redistricting ordinance?
Didn't you close?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me close the public hearing. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We adopt the ordinance under I1?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you, the committee. I know this has been a very difficult undertaking, and it looks like it's going to continue to be a difficult undertaking for the remainder of the year. So, I wish you luck. This is important, and this is the bedrock of our republic and our democracy, and I give credit to all of the hard work that everybody worked on this. This is, I know it's hard, but it is important. So, thank you.
See you in eight years.
I'm just glad to see the registrar got the spring and fire announcement.
At least some of us got them.
We're in the Kid Raven Dogwood Festival.
Item J, Appointments. Does any Board member have an appointment that has not been given to the clerk?
No.
If not, item K. Item K, all matters is, this is our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the Board to be routine, will be enacted by one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item can be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does any Board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Peters has made a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item L, Citizen Comments and Communications. I have no citizen comment communication request. Madam Clerk has none. Thank you. Item M is Reports. I would ask for a motion to receive and file all the reports that are listed in our agenda. Motion?
Motion.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item N, Reports and Inquiry of Board Members. The first batter up is Mr. Peters.
County-wise, I have nothing to report. I will not be at the next board meeting on April 12. I will be at Johns Hopkins for a biopsy, so y'all behave next meeting. I will be in the Twilight Zone at 3 o'clock, so.
We wish you luck.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Ms. Hooker?
I have no comments either, just our prayers are for you, Jason.
Thank you. Mr. Norworth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple economic development announcements. Cushman and Wakefield, Tallheymers, please announce the former Home Shopping Network building in the Hollands District at 1 Avery Road in Roanoke County has been leased to Worth Rev Car Fasteners, Worth Industry North American Company and part of the worldwide Worth Group. The building will be the single largest Worth facility in North America and will serve as the headquarters for Worth Rev Car Fasteners. The distribution warehouse consists of 388,000 square feet, which was occupied by Home Shopping Network for the past 30 years. It is a fully leased operation in the building, and it expects to open their new location in the third quarter of this year. Also, Southern Team announces expansion of their new Hyundai facility. They're excited and proud to announce the brand-new state-of-the-art Hyundai sales and service facility in the Hollands District of Roanoke County. The 30,000-plus-square-foot facility will be located at 7,300 Williams Road in North County with easy access from I-81. It's all due to Hyundai facility design with fast-charging electric vehicle capabilities. Will be under construction in the spring of 2022, with completion expected in the winter of 2022. And congratulations to both of those companies and continued economic development initiatives in Roanoke County. Thank you.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, too, Jason, give you Godspeed and success on your procedure in April, and look forward to you coming right back to us. I do have a question for our planning department. We just went through four different rezonings, special use. I just want to make sure, because when I read through that, as we move into the digital world, I wanted to make sure all those forms are in a PDF fillable format. I noticed people were still handwriting stuff in there, and some were not. There's a trick to that, so I just want to make sure we're in the digital world with those forms that makes it easier to fill them out and, you know, get it back in a digital format. So, I don't know who would handle that, but I just think that's part of the stuff that we're doing on the second floor that I like.
We will send you some follow-up on where that stands today, and if we need to make any improvements, what those will look like.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Lots of stuff happened since our last board meeting. The Cave Spring High School boys' basketball team won the class-three championship, seventy-six seventy-five over Petersburg.
Fantastic.
I invited, I communicated with Haley Deeds, the principal at Cave Spring, and invited her and the team and the coach to join us at one of our meetings to recognize them, and we're working that out. Many of the board members were able to attend on March tenth the State of Vinton address by Mayor Gross, which was an excellent event and a lot of good things happening in Vinton. That was a great event. On the ninth, I was able to represent the board on a ribbon cutting for Wine Gourmet and Medmont Mercantile here on Route four nineteen. And I complimented Brian Powell and his partner, Matthew, and give them a lot of credit for their courage to try to open and expand a small business in the middle of a pandemic. I think that's incredible and scary, and I'm glad they did it. Finally, I want to remind everybody, in April, we have the Go Two Hundred Plan meetings, community meetings. We have seven of them all throughout the county, and I would encourage all our citizens to participate in that process. With that, item O is a work session. We'll adjourn and go upstairs to the third floor for a work session to review with the board the county administrator's proposed fiscal year 2022-2023 operating budget. Ms. Gerhardt will lead us in that endeavor. Also, after the work session, we will have two closed meetings, and I would ask the boards at length indulgence to approve the appropriate motions. So the first one to go into closed meeting, section two point two, thirty-seven eleven A five of the Code of Virginia, to discuss a prospective business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Specifically, the board will discuss a proposed location, new business for the Center of Research and Technology. I so move. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion with a second. Would you please call the roll? Do we have to do each one separately or do them together?
No, you just need one. We can do one resolution for by one.
Okay. Then our second closed session would be also section two point two, thirty-seven eleven A five of the Code, discuss a prospective business or industry where no previous announcement's been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Specifically, the board will discuss construction of a facility in a Roanoke County park.
And I still second it.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Let's go upstairs.